Okay, it is 6:46 on April 19, 2023. This meeting of the Select Board is called back to order. I'm reconvening the the board and now open session. Want to know two things for the record. First of all, I already read the open meeting law language required by the legislature to conduct Zoom meetings. I also identified who's participating in tonight's meeting. So the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Joe, you ready to proceed tonight?
I am.
Liz, ready to proceed?
Yes.
All right, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes dated April 13th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an ayes while the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a warrant article discussion. Tonight we'll be taking up two remaining articles. First one is Article 27, which is purchase of 30 Summer Street. Let me turn it over to Tom to update everybody where we're at with that with that issue. Go ahead, Tom.
Great, thank you very much, Bill. So the you may all have noticed, the public may have noticed that there's an article, Article 27 in the printed warrant that showed up in your mailboxes a week or two ago that speaks to the potential purchase of a property on Summer Street, number 30. That's 30 Summer Street. That is the property right adjacent to the Rotary, to the beginning of the Rotary, next to the Marina, that 26 Summer Street. It is waterfront property and this this article suggests that it would allow, if passed by town meeting, would allow the Select Board to acquire by purchase, to authorize but not require the Select Board to acquire by purchase the property of 30 Summer Street. So what the story of how this played out was we were approached, frankly, out of the blue by the current owner of the property as an opportunity to purchase, with an opportunity to purchase his land at 30 Summer Street. We had not sought that and they came to us and suggested that it was something that that they would be interested in doing, selling that to the town. Given that, we met with them, talked to them about their, what they were thinking the property was worth. They, the owner expressed to us that the asking price was $1.55 million. The 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 discussion ensued. We talked back and forth about, you know, potential uses and what they, what, you know, they know of the property, et cetera. But ultimately, what we did is an appraisal. After that meeting, we did an appraisal and a Phase One environmental site analysis. The appraisal came back with an appraised value of $1.2 million down from the 155. And we did a, like I said, a Phase One site analysis. The Phase One site environmental site analysis suggested that there was the potential for some contamination on the site, given that, in fact, it was a former gas station that that was probable. And what that did is that led us down the path of of performing a Phase Two site analysis. We've received those, the feedback from preliminary feedback from that vendor that did the Phase Two site analysis. We have not yet received a final report. But some phase, the preliminary discussion anyway suggests that there may be, in fact, some contamination on site. We've also done some analysis of potential uses for that property. And and I'll lead, I'll read off a few of these. We had talked about these at some point prior, but it's possible that we could put the Harbor Master office in at this location. We could also perhaps look into turning the facility into a boat maintenance facility for the Harbor Master. We could make public restrooms there so that the public had a place to use the restroom and our showers if they're coming in from the mooring field heading up into the downtown area as an economic development effort. We could also increase our available municipal parking, which would, it would, it would allow the public water access at 30 Summer, but also potential use by the Hingham Maritime Center and the public over at Barnes Wharf. We also could use, could apply the building to some potential programming for the Rec Department, i.e. like things like paddle boarding and yoga, maybe spinning classes, et cetera, there. That's another potential use. It's a beautiful view out the back door, out the back window over the overlooking the harbor. It also could be, like I said, a general public access point from the mooring field to the downtown shopping and dining area. And then lastly, the other potential is that we could turn it, we could use it for a private lease or rental and try to recoup some of the cost of the purchase. So that's, what am I forgetting? The owner, in fact, has informed us so everyone knows that there are, there are potential other bids on the property. So we've been told that that there is a likely competitive situation with the with the purchase or the opportunity to purchase this property. I think that's everything I wanted to go over. Bill, did I cover everything in there?
I think you did. But if you didn't, let's open it up to board questions and I'll go, I'm going to open up the board questions quickly and then we'll go to Marco Bora from the Harbor Development Committee and then open up to the general public. So Joe, do you have any questions?
I don't know. I don't have questions about Tom's presentation. I think it was, it was excellent. I do have a view about whether we should move forward or not. Do you want to have that discussion or just limit it to questions at this point, Bill?
Let's do questions right now and then we can, we can deliberate.
Great.
Sound good?
Yes.
Liz, any questions?
Tom, thank you for presenting that information. Did you mention the building inspection? I may have missed that.
Thank you. I knew I was leaving something out. Exactly. Yep, we just received this yesterday. The building, the building on the property has been inspected and it's been determined that the property would be, is safe to occupy and is otherwise in 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 good condition.
Okay, great, thank you. And I know one thing that we talked about last time was just from a climate, the property from a climate resiliency perspective. Can someone just talk to what the benefits might be to the town from from that perspective?
Hi, this is Susan Murphy. I'm Special Real Estate Counsel to the town. What I can do is convey some information that we've received since the last meeting. And then also there is some information that staff, in particular, the Director of Community Planning has put together, so I can summarize that for you. The town did have a survey done of the property. Part of having the survey done, the height of the existing wall was measured. Currently, the wall along the back property line goes from approximately 1.1 feet, I'm sorry, 11.1 feet to 11.7 feet behind the building. Based on information from FEMA rate maps, the existing building is in a approximately elevation 11. A portion of the property is in, is in a flood zone. This is an area of the town where the infrastructure protects Route 3A, the Mill Street Sewer Pump Station, the National Grid Substation at the Rotary, and also a number of downtown businesses and residences where there's, you know, an interest in the town of trying to raise and kind of create a uniform level of seawalls along the entire harbor, not only to protect the park properties right at the harbor, but the inland properties that would be be affected on major storms in the future. Then based on this staff analysis, it's, you know, having the town having some control over this property and potentially being able to affect the future height of this wall, depending on kind of, you know, ownership and control of the wall would add to the town's resiliency efforts.
Great, thank you.
Bill, one other thing I didn't mention, and I don't know if we want to do it now, was what would be the annual cost to the town if we did the financing? What would that look like?
Sure, I can answer that. And I also remember, I forgot to mention one other thing. So the annual cost would be about $81,000 a year. That would be on a 30-year, 30-year borrowing on assuming a three and a half percent interest rate. I will say traditionally, we beat that assumption, but that's our standard assumption when we look at these potential costs. I would also note, and I forgot to mention this, that we also, one other item that we we performed since the Phase One site analysis was a survey of the property. We ran through that survey. We got, we got all of the feedback from it. It shows that the property, the back property, the wall and about a one-foot strip south of the wall is, will not convey or likely not convey with the property. It's likely not part of the property. And we're not, we're still trying to figure out who would own it and what ownership for that, the wall itself and that one-foot strip would look like. But it's looking like preliminarily anyway, that that in fact would not convey with the property.
Tom, thank you. All right, we can come back and deliberate. And Marco, I know you're short on time. Marco, just give me your name and address for the record and tell me your thoughts. Oh, you're muted. Oh, someone unmute Marco.
I got him.
Okay, hi, everybody. Marco Bore, 33 Elm Street, Chair of the Harbor Development Committee. So I've got three minutes to do this because I have a seven o'clock Zoom call with Japan. So first of all, Harbor Development Committee and Bathing Beach Trustees voted unanimously after a long discussion to support the acquisition of 30 Summer Street, mainly because it ties in really well as a missing link to our master plan for Hingham Harbor, thinking particularly about continuing the walkway, having public bathroom access in the heaviest utilized part of the harbor. There's over 1,000 students and adults going through the sailing and rowing programs on Barnes Wharf and there's no public access today to bathrooms. So that's an immediate benefit. You mentioned the opportunity to do year-round programming, which I think is a very strong asset potentially for the town, given especially that the average age of seniors now, I think we're going to reach 30 or 40% of our residents will be over 65 by 2030 and they're all going to be looking for more things to do. Statistically, the town has access publicly to about 6% of the coastline around Hingham. It's a very small number. Hewitt Cove, for example, shipyard, there's no public access to water anywhere. So having another piece that we have control over, I think, would be very important to the town. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to acquire such a property. The town has missed several opportunities over the last 30 years. And significantly to this property, as we have come to find, find out, it is almost impossible to permit any new structure on the harbor front. And so this is an existing building that is in place. And so from that perspective alone, having access to a building that's there is invaluable because to have to construct a new building on the waterfront is going to be very challenging. And last, my quick calculations would show that from a taxpayer impact, and this needs to be verified by AdCom, at the acquisition price over a, I assume, 20 years and 9,000 households, this comes down to about $9 per taxpayer per year. It's a relatively nominal impact. And so from our perspective, you know, we would be strongly in favor of doing this.
Marco, thank you very much and you made, you made your call right in time.
Thank you. All right. Bye, everybody.
All right, let me, let me open up to more public comment. I believe Bill Reardon wants to, wants to chime in. No, he does not. Okay, all right, covered it. All right.
Bill, did you want me to address that last comment that Marco made about?
Yeah, if you don't mind, go ahead.
I just wanted, I just want to make it perfectly clear to the town that this is not being proposed as a, as a debt exclusion project and that that there would not be a direct tax impact to the rate, to the taxpayers in town. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thanks. Yeah, it's going to be, we carried on our debt service, correct?
That's right.
Right, good. All right, if any other members of the public have any questions or comments, you could just identify yourself just by either raising your hand on Zoom or kind of waving at me and I will, I will call on you. All right, not seeing anyone. All right, it's, it's turned back to deliberations here. So I guess, I guess, we've been thinking about this project now for a good, a good couple of weeks. Obviously, I tend to agree with the, with the sentiments that this is not the best timing for this project, given, you know, the override and the debt exclusion of the fall. But I am in favor of this project for a couple of different reasons. First of all, I do wholeheartedly believe that this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to purchase this property and that we won't have this opportunity again to do so. It's been relayed to me from another board member who I respect greatly. We had an opportunity to buy a project at the harbor and she, she mentioned one of my colleagues that, you know, I really wish we bought that project when we had the opportunity to do so and we didn't. And I tend to agree 100%. I don't think we'll ever have another opportunity to buy this parcel. Secondly, it's been, I've been assured that this can be carried on our debt service and that although we're going to be running a very tight ship financially through fiscal '28, that we can manage this and it will not be something that will be overly burdensome to our municipal financial operations going forward. And lastly, I do agree with Marco that the parcel itself is strategically located at the harbor and it's too important not to, not to act on it. So those are my initial thoughts. Well, let me turn it over to my colleagues to see where everybody's at it. So Joe, I'll go to you first.
Sure. So thank you, Bill, and I agree with your assessment. I think the timing's not great. We just approved the two, two large capital projects, Foster School and the Public Safety Building. And now we're moving forward to consider an override. If we could defer consideration of the property right now, I would want to defer it. But we can't. This is a, this, this is the time we have to make a decision and I think we really need to look to the long term. And I think you summed it up. Others have summed it up quite aptly. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity. Either we move forward now or we lose it. And given the importance to the town and the importance to the harbor specifically, I think we need to move forward. And I do note that moving forward at this point means authorizing but not requiring the board actually to consummate the deal. There's additional due diligence that needs to be done and there may be additional negotiations that need to be done. And if those cannot be concluded to the board's satisfaction, we won't move forward. But at this point, I think to call quits now, we will all regret it both in the near term and in the short term. So I'm in favor of moving forward.
Joe, thanks very much. Liz, what are your thoughts?
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Joe. And thank you to the Harbor Development Committee for all of the visioning and planning. I certainly appreciate that work and and take quite seriously the recommendation. And I agree with you, Bill and Joe, in terms of of the opportunity. I'm just really struggling with the timing. I wish this was, it came up in a different year. I, I'm just having trouble moving forward with, with given where we are with the debt exclusions in the fall and the the potential recommended override right now.
Liz, thanks very much. Okay, with that then, I am going to make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article 27. Is there a second for my motion?
A second.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded. I'm going to call the roll. All those in favor, but Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
No.
And I'm an aye. The motion carries two to one. And thanks, everybody, for the consideration. Right, next item on the agenda is to consider Article, one second. Is a discussion of Article 11, which is a transfer to the reserve fund. I see here we have Sue Nickerson joining us tonight. Sue, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Good.
Can everybody hear me? Okay. Yes, Article 11 is to transfer some money into the reserve fund. So far this year, we have approved two reserve funds transfers in the amount of about $56,000. We have established five different departments that will estimate shortfalls for this fiscal year. Now, these are estimates and just let everybody know that if this is not used, any unused reserve fund transfer will turn into fund balance. It will go right into fund balance if we do not use it. Five departments are fire for $550,000, legal for $297,444, workers' compensation for $305,367, town meetings $137,074, and unemployment for $62,200. I've also added a contingency of $50,000 just in case something happens between town meeting and June 30th. So all that, I'm asking that Article 11 be appropriated for $749,194. I have Chief Murphy, Michelle, and myself if anybody has any questions on any particular item.
So thank you. I don't have any particular questions. Tom kind of briefed me on this, so I'm good to go. Joe, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't, but Bill, you may want to note for the record that Liz is no longer participating in this meeting.
Correct, yep.
No, I mean, I think your presentation is, too, makes sense. And as I understand it, these are, we're talking about transferring money to the reserve fund. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Right, okay.
We will, we will, we will do all the reserve fund transfers in June.
Yep, got it. Yeah, I've got no questions.
Okay, let me see if anybody from the public has any question to comment about this, this warrant article. If anybody wants to ask any questions, just kind of raise your hand or wave at me. Okay, not seeing anyone. And as Joe indicated, a board member of this client has left the meeting. So just me and you, Joe, for the rest of the evening. So with that, I'll take a motion.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article 11.
I would second that motion. All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes while the motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is to consider adoption of the municipal single-use plastic water bottle policy. And I think, Tom, you're going to lead the discussion on this one?
Sure can. Go ahead. So very quickly, really, about, no, gosh, it was over a month ago now. The Select Board considered the request of the Cleaner Greener Hingham. I forget the full name of that actual committee. There's a much longer official name. But Cleaner Greener Hingham came to us and asked us, asked the Select Board to support two articles at the time. One was the, the retail sale of, of plastic water bottles, a ban on the retail sale of plastic water bottles, single-use plastic water bottles. And the, and then there was another article relating to the procurement and sale and and distribution of single-use plastic water bottles by the municipality itself. At the time, the Select Board voted unanimously in favor of both articles. In, after that, those votes, that vote was taken, there was considerable discussion with members of the Cleaner Greener Hingham about whether or not it was more appropriate, and ourselves, but whether or not it was more appropriate that this, that the latter of those two articles, the, the procurement, sale, and distribution of single-use plastic water bottles wouldn't be better, wouldn't be better placed as a Select Board policy, a town policy, rather than a town bylaw for a couple of reasons, not the least of which is if somebody accidentally hands, you know, if I'm walking down the street and accidentally hand, you know, Michelle a water bottle, that's technically a violation of what would have been a law. And I don't, while it wouldn't have happened, nobody wants to have been in violation of a law. And we certainly wouldn't be sending people to court over such a, such a thing. But, you know, that, that just seemed a little, a little unnecessarily onerous. So in talking with everybody, everyone agreed that perhaps a policy made more sense than a bylaw. So, so that's what we're proposing here is to move or to create a new Select Board policy that would, that would, in essence, do exactly what that proposed article was proposing to do. That article, as you know, has been withdrawn and is not in the warrant and it is now before you as a potential policy. Oh, and one other thing. We added, the only thing different to the proposed article or proposed policy before you from the original article was an exemption for distribution of single-use plastic water bottles in the event of, in a, an emergency for, for our first responders. You know, the, the fire chief has explained that often when they're on, on scene of a fire, they have to have a cooler full of water for the, for the firefighters to, to be able to, to rest and refresh a little prior to re-engaging with the fire. So we wanted to make sure that whatever we did was in keeping, our, our practices were in keeping with the policy. So we exempted the public safety use of, of single-use plastic water bottles.
Tom, thanks very much. So, so basically, just to recap what you said, we just basically took the proposed article, we put it into a Select Board policy format and we carved out an exemption for first responders. Is that correct?
Much more succinct than I said it, yes.
Okay, obviously, I completely agree with the exemption. Not only for firefighting, but there are other situations where our first responders may need those water resources to complete the mission of their assignment. So sounds good to me. Joe, do you have any questions or concerns?
Yeah, well, first I want to address two things Tom said. The official name is of Cleaner Greener Hingham. It's the Long Range Waste Disposal and Recycling Committee, which is a committee I first served on when I moved to town. And second, it may have been worth making this a bylaw so we could see, Tom, you in handcuffs if you.
A lot of people would enjoy that, I think.
But no, but the policy reason is, is exactly right. And I really think, you know, it's, it's time for the town to do this. I know that almost a year ago, the Secretary of the Interior, the U.S. Interior Department, they issued their order, they're banning sale of single-use plastic bottles on all public lands and national parks with that to be fully in effect by 2032. And it's really, you know, the government, whether it's federal or the town of Hingham, we are, we need, we all need to do our part to reduce and the, the public's reliance on single-use plastic water bottles. And the Interior Department, their, their order deals with the procurement, sale, and distribution, which is really parallels what we're doing. So I'm comfortable moving forward. Thank you.
Joe, thank you very much. All right, let me see if anybody has from the public has any comments or question about this agenda item. If you have a question, just kind of raise your hand virtually or if you're on screen, just kind of wave at me and we will, we will unmute you. Oh, I do see hand up. Hold on a second. All right, who's ever run in the meeting are, or Michelle, could you unmute Tony? Don, if you could state your name and address for the record when we call on you, great, go ahead.
Sure, can you hear me now? Yep, Anthony George, I go by Tony George, 15 Blaisdell Road in Hingham. So, you know, speaking for the committee, I just wanted to urge you to enact this at the, at the town level as a, as a policy. You know, as, as I've learned, you know, I'm a newcomer to the committee this year and, and the work we're doing, the effort we're putting in. Joe, I think you really hit the nail on the head that it's part of a long range. It's, it's really a very small step in the grand scheme of things, but the, the step forward is such a, an important one, I think, for long-range eliminating waste, doing what we can to eliminate waste as a community. And I'm really proud for the first year I've put in on this committee. I think this work, this focus on this topic is just such a tremendous thing that the town is willing to step up and do and, and support from the selectman perspective here. So, you know, I really applaud what you're doing as a step forward to help us. It's huge when we go to town meeting in a short amount of days and, and ask the town to do the commercial ban. Having what you're doing here tonight be in place and voted positively is, is just tremendous. And on the committee, on the behalf of our committee, can't thank you enough for hopefully supporting us. Thank you.
Tony, thank you very much. Appreciate the comment. Anybody else in the public have any questions or comments about this, um, about this agenda item? All right. I'm not seeing any. I would make a motion, um, one second. I would make a motion to adopt the municipal single-use plastic water bottle policy dated April twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
I'm not as well, the motion carries. Uh, thanks, everybody. Appreciate all your work, Tony, in the committee.
Bill, I just want to point out to everyone that's listening, that makes this an official policy as of right now. I'll be issuing an email tomorrow to all employees to remind them that this is now in place.
Excellent, Tom. Thank you very much for that.
You bet.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion of a plan for statewide opioid settlements. We have, uh, Sue Sarnie from the Board of Health is gonna walk us through the proposed plan. Sue, good evening.
Hi, how are you? Um, I'm just gonna go over quickly the opioid settlement money. This is gonna be round one that we've received so far and will get appropriated at town meeting. Next slide. So, the initial first round of funding is a little over a million dollars. That's gonna be available to hang them through twenty thirty-eight. We're going to town meeting to appropriate two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. The next round of funding is gonna be another eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars through five new recently signed settlement agreements. And that will get allocated at next town meeting in twenty twenty-four. The initial plan for this first settlement year, we should call it, um, the two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars consists of, I call them three buckets. We'll hire a social worker for fifteen hours a week to support people who need to access opiate use disorder treatment, counseling, recovery, and long-term recovery so they can become members of our community again. Um, we're gonna put that with the social worker on, in the health budget, which is twenty hours. So that would be a full-time social worker. The next bucket would be outreach. We're appropriating twenty-five thousand dollars the first year to launch this in our community and let residents know what we're planning to do with the settlement money, what's gonna be available to the residents, and how to educate the community. We'll use throughout the years till twenty thirty-eight, uh, application process for any committees who would like to submit applications to help come up with ideas on ways we can educate the committee, I mean, the town. So we're thinking about five thousand dollars a year throughout twenty thirty-eight. And the big bucket is gonna be placement vouchers. So what we're wanna use that money for is to provide post-stabilization and treatment programs such as recovery programs, halfway houses, sober houses, for those residents who cannot afford that kind of service.
If I could just jump in at this point, uh, Mr. Chairman, just regarding how we intend to manage this program going forward. I- in your briefing packets, we provided the outlines of a a multi-year plan with the recognition that we're moving into a, a whole new area and that frankly, we have a lot to learn. Uh, Susan described an approach where, where you've got a framework, but I think we recognize that as we engage and learn more by, through our own experience, working with the community, learning more from the state, as well as best practices that are implemented in other communities. You know, this, this mix will evolve. And, uh, there are, there are many possibilities. We may find over time that it would make sense to expand the education effort. We may find that the demand for vouchers is something that we need to invest a lot more in. And certainly, we can't rule out the possibility of using the funds to, uh, cover more of the social workers', uh, uh, salary over time that can relieve some pressure on our budget. I think the most important thing is for us to, to move forward together, pay close attention to how, uh, our experience is unfolding and, and stay engaged with our stakeholders. Now, I also just want to speak very brief, briefly to roles. Just how will we, how, how will we move forward together as a community? Uh, uh, Susan has organized a mental health coalition that consists of a number of important uh, uh, leaders in town government that directly touch our community in different ways. And their roles intersect with, uh, substance abuse issues such as our Veterans Director Keith German, Aileen Walsh, our Police Department's Cr- Crisis Clinician, Heather Rodriguez, uh, of, uh, Public Schools Counseling, Mary Frugoli, our Elder Services Outreach Coordinator, as well as myself. Uh, we have the opportunity to, and will be engaging with the community going forward. Will be evaluating applications and proposals and, uh, under, under Susan's leadership, who, who's managing the coalition and will be managing reporting of, of how these funds will be used, make recommendations to the town administrator, who's the ultimate decision-maker in terms of hires and contracts that we may enter into. So we're, we're stepping into an important area. It's gonna take long-term commitment. And, uh, I think we're all very excited about it. With that, I'll, I'll stop and I think Susan and I are open to addressing any questions you may have.
All right, Sue, uh, thanks very much. All right, thank you as well. Sue, could you go back to the breakdown in the funds? Like, wh- wh- how much is gonna go where?
Might be beneficial here while you can just look at that slide, but, uh, Susan, depending where the questions go, we have that larger, um, spreadsheet as well. But, see, I'm sorry, Bill, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, all right. Do you have that one? So we broke it down over thirty to two thousand thirty-eight. The money that's coming in from the settlement is not one consistent number. It it's not consistent. So what we did is we plugged in those three buckets, the outreach, social worker, community outreach, and then the voucher program. And if you can look at this slide, so, so far, we have two hundred and thirteen. I'm gonna be getting another, we're gonna be getting another thirty-seven thousand. So that is what we'll have for twenty twenty-three after town meeting, hopefully to allocate. And we're gonna, we're rolling this money forward. The first year, we're gonna learn a lot. The state's coming through with a lot of guidance on how we can spend this money. I put a lot in, or we put a lot into the community outreach. I need the community's input on this, on really who needs the money. I need to talk to Aileen and the Mental Health Coalition about people who might need services for recovery programs. And to let the community know this is what the town of Hingham has for funding and what ideas each of the stakeholders has. And then we're gonna roll the money, but towards the end, because we can roll it, um, we're gonna have a zero balance. Now, this is just round one of funding. We have another eight hundred thousand that we can, um, talk about at nest, next, um, town meeting, but this is the preliminary idea.
All right, and, um, so we get thirty, we get thirty, you said how much? We had thirty-seven thousand more. It's gonna be put into this mix. And then, Tom, obviously, based on what our conversation was with Carrie, um, we're anticipating even more funds, probably, it may be in twenty-four?
Yep, so there'll be a total of about eighty, eight hundred thousand more coming over about a fifteen-year window. Um, and we'll, uh, that will come in, um, in, in annual payments as well, similar to this settlement. And we, the idea would be to augment this program with that additional money, um, in appropriate ways. So like I think Susan, uh, and Art are, are saying, we would either um, augment the, the cost of the outreach position, perhaps to lower the burden on the taxpayer, um, through the budget and free up more budget money, uh, for other purposes. Or we could, um, increase the community outreach, uh, bucket and perhaps do a little bit more education, um, the, as needed. Or we could increase the voucher program and provide more, uh, more direct help to people in most, in the most need. So, we're, like Susan said, Bill, we're gonna learn a lot in year one. And then we'll, we'll find out where the, where the biggest need is, right around the time that we're, um, that we're getting the new, that new settlement money and will, uh, will update and augment this program accordingly.
Okay, and my second question is, I, I know that we have some local groups, organization interest in applying for some of the funding. So how's, how's that process gonna work?
Um, we're thinking of something similar to like, uh, RFP, like a grant application. The state has given us guidelines on what we can use the money for. So we're, I'm gonna work with the Mental Health Coalition. And each year we'll put out, uh, idea for the community such as harm reduction. How can we increase connections to care? Um, opiate use disorder, how do we help address people in need involved in the criminal justice system? The state has specific guidelines for this money. So we're thinking each year we'll come up with, uh, grant program and have a sheet and they can apply and give us why they would want to spend the money and their ideas. And then the Mental Health Coalition will review it and make a recommendation to town.
Okay, and based on what Senator, Senator O'Connor said last week, I mean, you may even have additional funds coming in, uh, over that, I think you said the state has a billion dollars is what I heard. And say that, he's gonna try to get that down to municipalities to use for, uh, mental health-related or substance use disorder issues too. So that's great. Hmm. All right, excellent. Appreciate that. Joe, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, so Susan, thank you for the presentation. This was, this was really helpful. And it's my understanding that it was, it's the opioid settlements, those settlement documents that actually have the initial guidelines that we need to follow that explain, you know, the buckets that we can use uh, the money, how, how it's applied. And I know that the state is coming up with additional guidance. Uh, I would just urge, um, that, uh, to the extent, uh, that these funds can be used to, um, for funding to the town for services that we otherwise would be funding with taxpayer money, um, that this would be one aspect of a way to, uh, mitigate future, um, needs from, on, on the tax base, um, that, uh, you know, because we, we, we do offer programs right now. And again, to the extent that this opioid money can now be used and put in, uh, used in place of otherwise, uh, taxpayer money, I, I think that would be a benefit to the town. And it would also serve the purpose, uh, of the settlement. So I'm just urging that that be, uh, kept in mind as we move forward with this.
Mm-hmm, that second round of funding is gonna be key in that, because the guidelines from the state, Joe, say exactly that. They are, the money is to fill gaps and fix existing shortcomings of existing approaches. So ideas that we already had, we can use that money too to supplement, um, existing programs. So
great, thank, thank you. No other comments or questions.
And lastly, so this, so, Tom, this will be part of the Article six Board of Health budget, correct?
That's exactly right. Yep.
Okay. All right, let me see if anybody.
I'm sorry, in, in the balance, but in the balance budget.
Yeah. The balance budget, the base budget.
That's right.
The first one we're doing.
The first one, that's right.
First one we're doing, not the second one.
That's right.
Okay, so if anybody has any questions or comments, um, please just, uh, raise your hand and I will happily call on you. Okay, not seeing anyone. All right, Sue Sarnie, thank you very much for all you do. Appreciate it. Have a great night. Okay, next item on the agenda is, um, uh, is a matter of appointments. I do not have any, uh, suggested appointments this evening. Joe, do you have anyone?
Nope.
I think, um, at this point, for citizens interested in appointments, what we'll probably do is uh, wait till after town meeting and the change in board leadership. And then we will, um, we will have the interview process, which we normally do usually in early June. So if anybody is interested, we'll have you in for an interview with the three, uh, the three board members and, uh, the town moderator. And we can talk with residents about, um, their interest in different positions in the town. All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. If anybody wants to engage in public comment this evening, just raise your hand and I'll be happy to call on you. Not seeing any. I'm gonna turn now to, um, uh, uh, town administrators, Select Board reports. Let me start this evening with Art.
Uh, nothing to add this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Nothing, thank you.
And, uh, Tom?
Uh, just a, a correction. I, I blurted in at the end of the conversation on the, uh, water bottle policy that I would send an email out tomorrow, um, because I was looking, I looked very quickly at the policy and it was dated April. That's just the date of the policy. It will take effect in September for the new school year so that it's, uh, governing our sales of water bottles at the schools, but not until September. I will make sure, um, I know Carol is still here. Hopefully that correction is, uh, is understood. And then I'll make sure that the Cleaner Greener folks know that. That, th- this is in fact the policy that they, that they approved and they understood it would be September. I, I just got it wrong when I made my statement.
That's fine, brother, Tom, I appreciate it. All right, so, so like Board of Reports, Joe?
Uh, nothing other than looking forward to a very productive and successful town meeting.
Excellent. And Tom, let me go back to you real quick. Do you have any updates on town meeting and to add or, um?
Nope, so the, I, I couldn't just go over some of the logistics. Uh, great, great question. So we will have, um, the meeting starts at seven o'clock, doors open at five-thirty for anyone who wants to come in and get advanced seating. That's always an option. Um, and the lines get long. They, starting at about quarter to seven, they get very long and it takes a while to get in. So, uh, feel free to come early. Um, we're welcoming, doors are open at five-thirty. So feel free to come in early. Um, we'll start in the cafeteria, excuse me, uh, in the gymnasium as we always do. Um, then the, once the gymnasium is filled, then we'll open the doors for the auditorium. Once the auditorium is completely filled, then we'll open the doors for the cafeteria. Uh, but we'll do it in that order. Now, we don't want to have free spaces going, um, when they're not necessary. So we'll only open a new space when the prior space is full.
So, Tom, will there be a, a space where folks who maybe have COVID concerns could go that would sort of widely dispersed, um, and that that will be open before there's crowding?
Yes, absolutely. So in each of the three spaces, we'll have designated a small area in the back corner of one of the rooms of each room so that there's, um, it'll be our checkerboard seating. So every other seat will be available, uh, that kind of thing. So we can space people out.
Thank you.
Who, who are otherwise worried about that. Absolutely. We'll also have, um, masks available at check-in. There'll be uh, hand sanitizer, uh, available. Uh, there will be large print warrants available. We're, we're piloting a new, um, accessible, um, uh, closed captioning system this year that we're hopeful will, will be, um, will be helpful to those who need it. Um, yeah, so it should be a great meeting. Really looking forward to it. We're planning for over two thousand attendees. Um, uh, and, and again, the first night is Monday. It's scheduled for a second night if necessary on Tuesday. Well, I don't know, I think that's probably all the logistical detail anyone would need.
All right, thank you very much.
All right. Oh, actually, you know what? I can, I can note, anyone who can't, if there's no parking on scene, on site, when you get there, the first overflow lot that will be open is over at the Baptist Church. And there will be shuttle buses from the Baptist Church back and forth to the, to the high school, to the extent the Baptist Church ever fills, which it did not in the fall, so I don't expect it to at this meeting. But if it did, we have another available, um, overflow lot up at Wampatuck. And again, there will be, um, if we open ea- either, um, it'll go in order. Once, um, the school is filled and the street parking is filled, then we'll open up the church, that the Baptist Church, once that's filled, we'll open up Wampatuck in that order. And then we'll offer, um, once they're open, we'll offer shuttle buses to and from, uh, all of those parking spaces, uh, parking places in the school.
Tom, what is Wampatuck? What are you referring to?
Wampatuck State Park, the, the parking area up.
Oh, the park right, okay, got it. Thanks.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much. I do not have anything tonight. So with that, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm gonna as well, the motion carries unanimously. Thanks, everybody. Hope everybody enjoys the rest of, uh, school vacation week and we'll see you a couple of days. Take care.
Thanks.